You know, I had heard Ray was going to be a few more minutes late. So I think with four of us, we were able to talk about the 87 Crane Neck Street A and R plan.
Okay.
And I think I see Rich Williams of Williams &amp; Sporages is here.
I am. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. So why don't you take it away for us and we'll, we'll listen to your presentation.
Sure. Do you mind if I share my screen?
No.
Okay. Can you guys see that?
Yes.
All right. I, I think this property will be familiar to you guys.
Yes.
87 Crane Neck, the, the last time we were before you, there was a vote to approve the special permit for the common driveway and the special permit for the limited frontage lot. And the lots that are on the plan before you are consistent with the lots that are shown on those plans. There are two lots, Lot One, which would contain the existing Spaulding residence home and Lot Two would be the Lot Four for an additional structure. And obviously Lot Two is served in part by a common drive. And, and again, that common drive is the common drive that was acted on by, by your board recently. Both of the lots meet zoning. Yeah, all the dimensional standards. And I, and it's pretty simple. So with that, I'll open up to questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure there were no further changes in this from the, the frontage that had been shown to us on the reduced frontage lot. And then what was, you know, going to be left here for Lot Number One. So basically, there's, there's no changes in this from what you had shown us before for the special permit.
Correct. There are no changes. The only, we had submitted this plan previously as part of the whole package with the two special permits. The only change was that we added some notes.
Reading those.
Which referenced the decision by, by your board for the common driveway and the reduced frontage lot in that no further subdivision is permitted. And, and we did talk about those at the last meeting as well.
Yes, yes. Good. Okay.
So is the purpose of this application to create an A and R for Lot One?
Well, no, it's an A and R to divide the total parcel into two lots.
But the one lot has already been created with reduced frontage, right? It's not, it sounds like.
Special permits were issued for that, for the driveway and for the reduced frontage lot. However, these lots weren't created. They're created by this plan, which will then be reported at the registry.
Yeah, my, my recollection, and Sue can probably help clarify this, is that, you know, when we asked Town Council about why we did not take up the A and R initially, she felt that it needed to follow the special permit approval. And, and in other words, we would have been putting it ahead of the special permit hearing.
Correct.
So I, is that more or less correct, Sue?
That is correct. She, she, her opinion was that the special permit for the reduced frontage lot then brought it into compliance to allow it to be divided via an A and R because now they both have the appropriate frontage.
So having received that opinion, really what concerns us tonight is the two typical A and R matters of area and frontage, right?
Yes.
Great forward. Okay, thanks.
The access, I think.
And access, yeah.
So any other questions? Deb, Tim?
My, my only question, I think, has been resolved. Early on in the process, it alluded to clearing a great deal of Lot Two. There's no mention of that in here. And it seems to me that in a previous discussion, it was determined that, that that wasn't going to happen. I don't know if Mr. Williams can address that.
I can. In the, the plan that was approved, the common driveway plan, we had amended that plan to show a much reduced, a limited clearing and then a, outside of that, just forestry management. So yes, the, the amount of clearing was greatly reduced.
If I could just go back to the question Ann asked, this really is to create Lot Two, right? Because Lot One was an existing conforming lot. So the lot that's being created, you know, here is Lot Two.
Right. Lot One existed, but it didn't exist like it shows on this plan.
Correct.
Yeah. Lot One was the overall lot. Lot Two will be the additional lot, but Lot One is, in essence, it's a, it's a a different lot. So we need to memorialize that so it can be recorded at the registry.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, Lot, Lot One previously didn't have that, you know, it went all the way to the Butters line, including what was his driveway. So now the, the reduced frontage takes away that. And so we are approving the, I guess, if you will, the adjusted frontage that's left on Lot One. That's, that's what we're, we're here to determine tonight.
Right.
All lots that are shown on this plan need to meet the dimensional requirements of designing. And they do, and they are annotated as such.
And, and what are the actual frontages for the both lots? It's a little small for me. I can't read them.
I'll zoom up a little bit. So Lot, Lot Two has the hundred feet and Lot One has 260.88.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I'll ask if there's any members of the public who wish to make a comment. Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion. And I, I admit, I looked for the, the language on these A and Rs and I couldn't put my fingers on it earlier tonight. So I'll, I'll have to ask Ann if she can do the honors here.
To dredge this up from my old Chip Wallace memory. I move that the board endorse this plan showing two lots as one not requiring approval under the subdivision control law.
Brilliant.
Does that sound right, Ray?
It does. It does. I don't know if Tim seconded or I'll second, whatever. Thank you. That sounded fine to me.
Me too.
All right. All those in favor? Brian Murphy, aye. Breakhook guy?
Verdi, aye.
Tim Cronin, aye.
Deb Hamilton, aye.
Okay. Thank you. Passes five zero. And welcome, Ray. Sorry, I didn't see you arrive.
No worries. Sorry for being late.
No, 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 no problem.
Thank you all. I'm going to stop sharing here.
Okay, Rich, thank you very much.
Yeah, we appreciate your time.
We appreciate it. Have a good Thanksgiving with your family.
You all too.
Enjoy.
So well, hold the, I have the, the plan here at Town Offices that will require your signature on the Mylar Plan so it can be recorded. Shall I leave? I will be in for limited hours tomorrow, or do you prefer to wait until next week?
That'll be fine. I think we're all a little, you know, holiday prep time here. At least I, yeah, speaking for myself anyway.
That works for me. Thank you.
Okay, good. And, and maybe you can just remind us next week or whatever.
Yes, I certainly will.
Great. All right. So the next item on the agenda is the zoning bylaws and proposed additions and amendments and definitions that Sam Jocelyn had been working towards with Sue. And you know, I think we should, we'll just call it up and see where we get tonight. My, my goal is not to have a terribly lengthy meeting tonight, but if we can get through maybe a bit of this, because I do want to spend some time on the, the draft regulations. Get through a few pages of that anyway, or help us frame it out. Some of it just, and again, I don't think anyone wants to be up till 10 o'clock tonight, so. So Sue, why don't you lead us through this and, you know, I've got a few questions as we go and see where we'll just take.
Can you see it? Is it of suspicion size?
I, I'd like it a little bigger there for me. Thank you.
Is that?
That's good. I can read that.
Okay. Is it centered? Yeah, so I'm sorry that Sam isn't here, but basically he's just wanted, he's been working on this for a while and his main goal is to create different definitions that are aligned with the building code. Makes his job a lot easier when, when everything is defined similarly. So I think that's in general what he's done. He's also recommended taking some out because he's done word searches and they don't occur in our zoning bylaw. And he's added some that are missing. So where you see the changes, I think primarily it's to, to align with building code. And then you'll see some that are taken out and some that are added.
So do you think the accessory building is a result of the?
I think instead of calling it accessories.
It's really more of a structure.
Yeah, I think it's. So if, can you see when I?
Yes.
Knock on that that says, he said, delete and replace with accessory structure. And this is the building code definition of an accessory structure.
Huh, okay.
Yeah.
I don't like it.
You like buildings that are structured?
Make a note. RC, RC says.
Yeah.
Isn't that interesting? I know.
Well, I think an accessory building, building maybe has a particular definition. And you could have an accessory structure, which might not be defined as a building, but you would still want to control in terms of setback, et cetera.
Well, if, if this is what Sam wants, if this aligns with Mass Code, then fine.
Okay.
That sheep, sheep shed you intend to build, Ray, that's a structure, not a building.
There you go.
I was gonna say, it may have to do with the, you know, shed use and things of that sort.
Well, I, I, I just take issue with using the word in the description that you're trying to define. It seems like a definition should not include the word. It shouldn't say accessory when, when that's what it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, when, when there are two words, I think it, it kind of has to. It says accessory structure is a structure that is accessory. You wouldn't think that would need a definition, but I don't know what else you could call it.
Gotten rid of that accessory too. You'll leave it as incidental.
Right.
That seems clear, but.
But it's the building code definition.
Building code place, you know.
Right.
Or additional rather than accessory.
Oh, but Sam's goal is to make this consistent with another.
We're not going to bite him.
I know, I know. Well, it's okay for us to hem and haw a little.
My problem is not with Sam. My problem's with the Massachusetts government.
Boy, thereby hangs the tail, I'm sure.
Oh, boy. Yeah.
No, no, I'm good. I'm good. I'm good.
Addition, addition, I think, is just something that, that he'd like added. It's not in there. What is a definition? So he's added that definition, which is straight from the building code definition.
That cannot be.
Seems pretty useful to have.
Yeah, but an increase in floor area.
Number of stories or height of a building or structure.
But you don't like that?
It should be a, you know, a building extension or increase or something anyway. But that's fine. If that, if that aligns with Mass General Law, okay.
Mass Building Code.
Mass Building Code. That's what I mean. Well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, well, he has no beef with adult use because we probably, we probably took it from the building code to begin with. Never would have made that all up.
So I think he's getting rid of an apartment. And here he says, only used in the industrial district relating to onsite caretaker unit. Language in this section can be changed from apartment to attached dwelling unit.
Okay.
This one is not used in the bylaw.
So I just, wait a minute. I'm confused with.
So we had both apartment and an apartment house.
I think it means that we are going to come to attached dwelling unit pretty soon. It's just not.
Oh, oh, I see. Okay. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Of course.
Yeah, I didn't print it out. Okay.
No, I didn't either, but I'm guessing.
Well, although it isn't there.
It's not there. So that's confusing.
Yeah.
We need to ask him, shouldn't we have attached dwelling unit then? If he kind of alludes to that?
Is he saying it should be an attached dwelling unit? For language and then you leave it?
No, I think, I think what he's saying is that the, the concept that's described in the existing apartment definition is one that's now captured by our attached dwelling unit definition?
Accessory dwelling unit.
Or, okay, accessory dwelling. You're right. So where's that going to appear?
Where is that?
Well, I don't, I, I get, I, I would say we just don't need apartment. We just don't need it.
Right. Does he mean when this can't be changed? Does he intend to change it?
I, I think instead of using an apartment, what he's saying is you can use an attached accessory dwelling unit.
Okay.
Defining that in, in another place.
Okay, but we don't have it here because that's.
Have it.
I think he's, what I think he's saying is there, in the industrial zoning language, it refers to an onsite caretaker's unit. And that we could, that language could be changed to apartment or attached dwelling unit. So I, I think that's what he's saying.
Oh, in, in the industrial section description?
Right, because I think in, in the industrial, I think that I, I'm not sure. That I might have saw something that the only housing or dwelling that is allowed there is someone that, who, who is a caretaker for that site.
We're really.
Does that sound, does that even sound familiar?
Also theoretical at this point.
Yeah. I flagged, I flagged it so we'll, he'll know what he'll need to.
All right.
Talk about when he comes in.
Okay.
Yeah. So we got rid of the apartment house. That's fine.
ATM.
And, yeah, I was confused. What, what does he say about ATM? Does he say anything there?
When it's crossed out, he doesn't, what he said in the past is it's not used in the
Really?
In our byway. So, but I don't know about that.
I, I just wonder why we're striking the whole thing.
Because we don't use it.
He said he's done a search and the ones that he's deleted are mostly because they don't occur in the, in our bylaw. We don't refer to an ATM.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
We might use, we might.
Several, we had several that got permitted.
Do you call them drive-throughs?
And then.
Well, we did, but we did, but we might have just. Let's see, the one at the bank would have just been a part of the whole bank.
Part of the whole package.
Yeah. And the walk-up one that we had at the food mart's gone, so.
Yes.
Maybe it's an accessory structure. With money.
Well, if it, if it was a, if it was something you could walk into, I would agree. That was an open air one.
I think you have to go into it. That would be a building.
Well, I'm, I'm fine. I was just curious. Okay, but.
We can get him to confirm that. So I did just, I did just want to go back to the, an apartment. Because what it does say in your bylaw in the industrial building, it talks about the permitted uses, which is manufacturing enterprises, research laboratories, office buildings, printing establishment, and apartment in a principal structure for occupancy of a watchman or caretaker. And I think he's suggesting we change the language within the bylaw that instead of calling it an apartment, which I think is the only place where apartment is in the bylaw, that we change that to, what did he want to use? Attached dwelling unit.
Dwelling unit. I'm not sure we want to talk a lot about the industrial district.
Since this, right, okay. So, but that, I just wanted to confirm that.
That's just my opinion.
Thanks.
Okay, so basement.
And that's.
This is another weird one.
Yeah, I've got that same issue. A story that is not a story?
Above the ground plane.
It just seems more complicated than it needs to be. It's, it.
From the state again.
Story, it's not a story above grade plane. You almost need to define what the definition is.
You do. See, story above grade.
That's right.
We will come to later because that's going to have a whole thing about how you've come, you know, calculated.
Exactly.
Which grade, you know, we've all done that, right?
It does, yes.
Well, I, I didn't get down to the essence, so I'll, I guess.
It's not there though, is it?
I don't know.
No.
Are you above grade plane?
I, I gave up when I got frustrated with my thing not lining up.
Oh, now we're.
Sorry. I was gonna, I was gonna try to find story, see if it was in there.
Oh, you jumped the gun. Let's see.
Yeah, I did.
More back.
No, it isn't in there. Interesting.
Well, that's another one for, for him then.
Flag that one as well.
I guess I'd have, I, the, the definition doesn't make any sense. Ray, you're the engineer. What do you think?
I'm, 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 I'm looking at the Mass Code, right? I'm trying to find it.
I was wondering.
So you've got a head scratcher too.
Yeah.
Well, I think if you say that, you know, you, you come up with this grade plane, which is another thing that then probably has to be defined.
It certainly does.
Stories are either above it or below it. And so they've.
Not necessarily walkouts.
And some are half and half, right?
Uh huh, right.
Yep.
I don't know. I just, I, it's.
For example, if I were just, if I were just to pull one out of air, I would say any building story below the, the floor you walk onto through the, from the main entrance, that kind of thing.
But I have a feeling that this, in the building code specifically, I'm guessing here, but that it has to do with habitability and therefore egress and on and on and on, the kinds of things that the building code is concerned with.
Well.
But we can ask Sam to clarify.
Yeah, this, this, this one is a, I don't know. I'm, I'm troubled by it, so.
And then it says finished basement was deleted, so why don't we just strike through it?
Yeah, there's a few that are deleted.
Yeah. Can we just ask him, can we strike through the deleted stuff? Or do you have to get those things for time immemorial?
I know. It seems silly, doesn't it?
Yeah. Unless there's some reason.
So the, the Massachusetts Building Code refers to the International Residential Code.
Trouble. And once you get into that IRC stuff, you'll go blind trying to find stuff.
Yeah.
Vast and weird.
Basement. A story that is not a story above grade plane.
No, it isn't.
See, story above grade plane.
That's in the state building code, the international building.
Yeah, although the international building code is not actually an international building code, but it's.
No, Americans say that kind of thing all the time.
But Massachusetts.
Story above grade plane.
They adopted that like 10 years ago, the whole.
Yeah.
More than six feet above the grade plane, more than 12 feet above the finished ground level at any point.
Yeah, so this is very specific. So we just have to go with it, I think.
I, I think we have to go with it, even though, like I said, even though I don't like it. Grade plane, a reference plane presenting the average of the finished ground level adjoining the building at exterior walls.
Yep.
The reference plane shall be established by the lowest points within the area of the building and lot line. Lot line is more than six feet, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, it's a whole thing. Yeah.
It's a whole thing.
I mean, Ray, you explained it much easier, but that's, that's the code, so.
That's not what we're doing. Yeah.
So we're, we're applying the Murphy Principle here, the way I see it.
I guess.
And that's Murphy with an E in this case.
I, I, but this is, it's a little weird. I, I will tell you that. But, okay. Okay, let's carry on.
Okay, so boarding house he's proposing to get rid of. I think that would be great.
Yeah. It's one of those, anachronisms from years gone by.
Yes. Now.
And he's changed building just to.
Yeah.
Again, align.
Yes.
Okay. Well, he's added his title, Building Commissioner. Okay.
Deleting childcare center. That's interesting. That not a.
I noted that. Why delete that?
What's up with that? Is there a new term for that sort of place? I'd like to know what the substitution is for that because that's something that certainly wants to be.
Yeah, there are a lot of people who run childcare centers out of their homes that ought to be in here somewhere.
Well, and then that's another thing, home daycare. Yeah, I don't know where that.
Is that a use by special permit?
No.
No, I think it's permitted and something, I don't know if it's in all three zones, but.
We need to ask Sam about that one, I think.
Yes.
Now you're gonna make me look at that.
Well, nursery school was also deleted, not to jump ahead, but it just struck me, I, what's the deal?
They may all be in a different, maybe all in a different place.
Okay.
So we'll find out. You'll, you'll make a note of that?
Right, yes, I did. Brian, I think we may have run into one of yours to show where it doesn't align. So under congregate housing, I see a note and it says, definition serves no purpose in the bylaw as the use is described in the section relating to banks, ATMs.
Yeah, this, okay. This is probably where my eyes started, like, what the hell are we doing?
Needed to be moved up.
ATM. Yeah.
Yeah, there's some weird, weirdness going on here. Okay.
So.
Was it just my machine?
It was not. So it's interesting. I wonder, I wonder where, how they got. I don't know why I'm moving this, but there. We may find, we maybe will find the answers to all the other questions we're asking.
There's more weirdness then. It gets worse, so.
Yeah. I bet this one is also.
Displaced.
One of these other ones. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
So same with cooperative. That just is going to go well together. Makes sense.
Yeah, I don't think that.
I don't think that's a.
We never have that here.
No.
Also not a function of zoning, any more than condominium.
Yeah.
Family, family daycare is a permitted use without a permit.
Family.
A boarding house is a permitted use without a permit.
Correct. We're getting rid of that.
Right.
So how do you get rid of that and yet still have, have it in the bylaw?
Oh, maybe, maybe that's his next step. Is he gonna? Is it to, to go through that? I, I think that's probably what his idea is.
I think, so my guess is where it says, so you can, can you see where it says, is this a use we want to retain? My guess is that may go with that. And he's asking, do we want to retain this in the bylaw, boarding house? Is that a use that we want to retain? So this seems like more of a, not really a definition thing. This kind of is queuing us up or the board up to make a decisions about maybe use changes as well. Because as you say, it is kind of an outdated term and an outdated mode of habitating.
Yeah.
Yeah, but whenever, whenever you strike a permitted use, it's, it's a bigger deal than it might seem to us, you know?
Yes.
Taking away.
Ripples through a bunch of stuff.
You're taking away somebody's rights. You're taking away somebody's rights.
Yeah, it's in section five or whatever, right?
Five, eight, two, three, boarding house.
Or is it a, or is it just not a zoning issue? Does it, does it, is it anyone's business if you have someone living in your house other than you, since we don't define family, et cetera?
Actually do define family, believe it or not.
Yeah, some, some places do, yeah. Then, uh, basically it's people who occupy the same household.
But it's not, the boarding house use is not a by right use, is it?
Yes.
It is, up to four.
Five, A, two.
Okay, five, A, two.
Which is permitted uses in residents A, B, and C.
Okay, so I think the que- then I think the note to Sam on, with the boarding house definition is what about five, A, two?
Right. I think that's his question.
Leave it, yeah, I mean. Yeah.
I mean, there, there is the, you know, pragmatic thing is like, well, if nobody's doing it.
Right.
You know? But then again, if nobody's doing it, why, why do we care if it's in there? It just becomes an anecd- it's like a piggery in our, in our bylaw.
Yeah, especially if it's by right anyway.
Yeah.
And none of our business.
So that's unfortunate that these don't align.
I know, we're gonna be left playing a guessing game.
Right, well, we'll definitely have Sam come in then next time.
And they, you know, as far as the daycare thing is concerned, I mean, here we have family daycare is, is, uh, but when they say family daycare, I don't know why you say family.
Yeah, so here.
Here we go.
I found, I found Sam's note, state uses lodging house versus boarding house. Change in language needed in five, A, two.
Okay, can we move that note up to boarding house?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm okay with changing the name to match the state definition, that's fine.
See, I was guessing about what he meant.
So the question is, we would leave it but as lodging house?
Yeah, and it maybe, he may have put, I don't know if he.
Yes, and, yes, and then we'd have to change it in five, A, two. I think that's what he's saying.
Mm hmm.
I'd regularize this if you're gonna keep it.
All right, let's see.
It's that one.
So I'm not sure this one.
Before you, before I let go of the daycare thing, to me, childcare center makes sense more than family daycare.
Well, they're two different things.
Mm hmm.
Are they?
Mm hmm.
Yeah, child, so childcare center is something like the children's castle.
Yes.
And then family daycare is when I have people paying me to take care of their three kids at my house.
Hmm.
Okay.
But I don't.
I would also say it may not mean kid care, could be elder care.
Elder care.
Or something.
Right, right, right.
Well, alls I'm saying is, uh, that's fine. But it, yeah, our definition should respect what we intend there. So their family daycare is, uh, not more than six.
Oh, actually, yeah, I see, it does, it, it does say six children, it's not.
But I, but the state regulates that. You have to get a license for family daycare and the number is controlled and all kinds of other things, so.
As long as it matches, that's, that's okay.
And I'm assuming if Sam didn't comment on it, then it does match. Right? We can ask him.
Right.
But I don't know, what about the childcare center thing, what he did with that, if it's considered like a school and therefore it's just allowed anyway? We'll have to ask him.
And saying, I'm seeing a bunch of stuff pop up with, okay, I'm seeing family childcare in Mass General laws.
Hmm.
So family childcare, okay, wait, Mass Gov, childcare program.
Yeah, but that's not the building code.
Family childcare. This is in the Mass Gov site.
Yeah.
And so they've got, that, so Massachusetts is using family childcare as, as their definition, so that I think, I think we, we want to flag that family daycare and, and question whether or not we should change that to family childcare, because here are all the laws about how to apply it and, and how much it costs and.
Yeah, but that may not be the building code, that may be a different whole branch of.
It's not the building code.
Right, so he's trying to match those definitions.
Yeah, but I think we should match the Massachusetts general laws too.
We have to ask him.
What is family childcare? Um, a licensed family ch- childcare, uh, licensed by the Department of Early Education, up to six children.
Mm hmm, okay.
And there's another for up to eight, up to 10. I, I just, I just think it, it makes sense. You know, it's not, that, some of this stuff, yes, we're trying to match the building code, and then there's other stuff like permitted use. I think we want to, we want to match the mass.gov site, don't you? Cause then it's unambiguous, and if there's any kind of definition or whatever, boom, there it is.
Well, yeah, we need his, we need his opinion on that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, if, if it's okay with you, I would like to flag it.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I have flagged it.
Sure.
Um, family daycare though, in this era where, where we're getting so many old people or people who are disabled and go and spend parts of their days in congregate places, family daycare could be more than just children, couldn't it?
Well, I think.
Well, then I think, then I think that.
Adult daycare is a thing too.
There's probably a definition of that, that we would then, then we would add. But I'm looking for Mass General Law and, on elder daycare.
Right, right.
I'm getting nothing. There's a bunch of stuff on elder law, but I'm not saying anything about elder care. And there's, there's gotta be something out there, but we would, I, so I would say that a, a good upgrade to our bylaws would be to add the, the definitions per Mass General Law. And then, you know, if, if we want to clarify, we go to town meetings, say, look, we're, we want to be clear about elder law, elder daycare and, and childcare.
And, and, and not just elder, I mean, there are disabled people, there are people with chronic conditions that um, take advantage of those situations, and, and it seems like a private home could provide a lot of them.
Yeah, I think, so you went by the congregate care.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Did we have that here?
Congregate housing.
Yeah. Right here, group living arrangement.
He only changed one word in that.
Okay, so there is in Mass General Law, congregate care. And, and another thing, it's called congregate housing.
Yeah, this is housing. Yeah.
What does congregate care say, Jay, oh, Ray?
Um.
I think that's more like a nursing home.
Uh, part one, title nine, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, congregate care program. And it's not capitalized here, so it's probably not defined as such. Anyway, it's section thirty-three C of, of chapter one nineteen of title seventeen.
Oh my goodness.
Yeah. We're lawyering on the fly here, what do you think, Tim?
That's right. I think we're gonna continue to find this, that, um, the legislature doesn't pay any attention to what the building code definitions are.
Exactly, I think that's kind of a problem.
Well, once again, I think we've got two different types of definitions here. Some are building codes, how you build it, how you permit it, all that kind of stuff. And then the other thing is permitted use stuff, like farming isn't going to show up in the building code. Right, but it's important that we have it in our.
Here it is, and it tells what part of Master and a lot came from. Right there, cause that's a right too, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's not building code stuff, though.
Nope. And that's a use thing, so yeah, so our definitions include use-related terms, I get your point, as well as.
So did you flag that family daycare for me?
I did, yes.
That it should be maybe family childcare.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Frontage. That's interesting.
It's just a typo on that one.
Yeah, there's.
Just locked that.
Yeah. That's pretty tricky, because many corner lots have access from both sides.
I was wondering about that.
Are you, you could have, you could have a corner lot, you could have a corner lot that doesn't have frontage by that definition.
Because the street, because the house doesn't face that particular street or that.
Or the, the street that the house faces.
Right.
Frontage over which, uh, you.
Right, right.
House, that might not be sufficient, I don't know.
Right. Yeah, I was wondering about that reference to the way that the house faces the street.
You got a little typo in there through the last thing.
I see that, yeah, I can't, I can't fix it, cause this, yeah, but I'll note it.
Sam, but yeah, okay.
Well, I think this needs a discussion with Sam, so.
Now what's, is the next yellow?
Let's see if we can figure out where this goes. Term only found in definitions.
But we don't know.
Don't know which, right, I don't know what that's referring to. It might be cooperative.
I wonder how they got so mixed up.
Interesting, yeah. Well, maybe some uses were taken out or something, and then the definition, just forgot to do the definition. I'm just guessing, which is a bad idea.
I did find, I did find frontage.
Yeah, this, this is a wonderful. We, we did this diagram, I remember where you worked on this, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that.
Those tangent sections.
He wants to do away with this.
Oh, no. The diagram?
Wow.
Oh, no. I love that diagram. It's at the end of the book, right? The only thing I could understand in there.
Let's, uh, let's flag this one too.
I've got it flagged.
Picture is worth a thousand words.
I think they were.
And as long as you're making notes, Sue.
Yes.
There's a section eighty-one L of chapter forty-one of title seven, which is definitions.
Mm hmm.
And there's not a bunch here, but frontage shows up, uh, under the section and subdivision.
Could you give me the eighty-one L, chapter?
Section eighty-one L of chapter forty-one.
Okay.
Just the zoning code, so yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I wonder if that's where he got that one.
Well, it's interesting, because this is definitions, but frontage itself isn't defined, they use it in defining subdivision.
Great.
Yeah.
I have a question about the hazardous materials definition, um, that does not look like it's updated.
So. Just dragging a thing back to farming.
Yeah, some of them are obvious.
Oh, good.
And some of them aren't.
Goes out in the margin somewhere.
So the hazardous materials.
Yeah, it looks like it's old. Yeah, I mean, it has some references that, you know, it, there are other additional federal and state laws that are referenced here, yeah.
Those are pretty squishy, pretty squishy references.
It also says substance or solid material, which I thought was interesting, so it doesn't include oil.
Or what about air?
Oh, no, oil would be a substance.
It's a substance, you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, when you say substance or solid material, it almost looks like you're excluding liquid. You know?
It could be a gas too, a substance.
Well, there's, there's a, there's a nice one here at the U S E P A. Um, material with properties that make it dangerous or capable of having a harmful effect on human health or the environment.
Yeah, that's the standard type of language. The, you've got some other language in here about unreasonable risk to health, safety, and property, yeah.
It's, it sounds like it was written by a oil company.
All right, so we'll.
And then there, then DOE has their own one.
Yeah, we'll ask about that.
And OSHA has their own.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the problem, they all have their own, you know, but, you know, it should be really.
And that's what we're trying to fix here, we're trying not to have our own. Right? Seriously, that's, that's.
Yeah, that's right.
Principle is we're, we're trying to, we're trying to use other people.
Yeah, because you shouldn't have, especially hazardous materials, you shouldn't have a different definition than, you know, the federal estate law.
So what did you get rid of kindergarten? This is another children one that's kind of.
Yeah.
I wonder if it's because it's not in the bylaw. I don't know where it would be, do you? Where it would be in the bylaw?
Oh, I see, yeah, probably not.
We skipped over kennel. Did we skip over kennel?
I just, I just wrote, wrote a note to Angus today suggesting the groups, departments, and staff work on clarifying the kennel licensing and the kennel bylaws and all those regulations, so.
I've, I've, I've got the bylaw up, and I confirm that kindergarten only shows up in definitions.
Thank you. So that's good.
Okay, and kennel, um, you know, I know Brian mentioned that he had, uh, it was a resource from, was it town in Newbury? I think.
No, no, that's, that's our animal control officer.
Okay.
Uh, she's, she's Newbury Port and here.
Newport in here, okay. Yeah, I just don't know if we need to conform the definition of kennel here. I don't know how old this is and how accurate it is.
The one thing that I think should be changed about the kennel, it, well, and, and it may be a policy and, and a use, not just a, a change in the definition, but this, when this refers to kennel, it's referring to the facilities, and I wonder, we interpreted it to mean commercial facilities or a business, and I wonder if somehow that, whether that's the case.
It's sort of implied in the definition here.
It is, they customarily kept for sale.
Yeah.
No, 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 no.
The only thing that's.
And, and including for sale, but it can be maintained for, for breeding, for hunting, your, your own four dogs that you breed.
Yeah, I, I just think that, that this definition of kennel means you've got a, a, a structure or, or something built into your home that is a facility for keeping.
Right.
I think I'd doubt the shop thing, because I think that really uses it. Can we get rid of that part?
Well, I think we need to think what the purpose of the kennel bylaw, are we trying to control uses only because they're commercial? Or are we trying to control any facility that has more than four dogs in it?
Mm hmm, I would say commercial.
I think it's a conversation.
Four dogs in their house, I mean, God love them.
I know.
I don't know.
So here, you, you could, you could have six dogs in your house, right? But you're not, you're not maintaining those six dogs for breeding, boarding, sale, training, hunting, or other.
Or maybe you are.
I mean, if they're.
Well, if you are.
Well, that's what I'm, how do people know? I mean, if, you know, I knock on the door and ask, and they say, oh no, those are just my pets. I mean, how are we gonna, can, how do we police that? That doesn't.
Well, I don't, I'm not interested in being part of the kennel police.
No, neither.
But I, I, yeah, I, I, I think that's one of those deals where, um, that I, I think, I think our, our bylaws work here. I agree that we can delete and including any shop where dogs are customarily kept for sale.
Because a shop is another matter altogether, whatever you sell there, it's a shop.
Right. Right, and so then we define kennel as facilities for keeping the dogs.
Yes.
And then, um, in five, A, three, B, kennels are provided, or, or permitted with a special permit in residence A, B, and C.
Okay, so to do any of the things in the definition, you would need a special permit. You would still need it.
It sounds to me like just the facility itself needs a special permit, unless you're.
Yeah, but, but here we go. This is where it's a little confusing, because in five, A, three, B, um, you can get a, a permit, a special permit, and it's a provided use, provided that Roman numeral three, animals are housed within a building and all facilities for breeding, boarding, trading, and kenneling animals are within a building, so it says, this is kind of a circular reference here. You can have a kennel, provided that you have the facilities.
You can have it by a special.
And then here you've got kennel, which is the facility, so this is part of the confusion.
Exactly.
Yeah. Well, I think Sam needs to be part of that conversation in town.
Yeah, and I think the animal control officer.
Right.
Well, yeah, I, I think we need to see what the town is gonna do first, and then.
Yeah. And I think, I think the planning board or the town, because it'll take a vote, needs to decide whether you want to control a use, or is it the facility?
Right, there's two things.
Yeah, and is it a commercial use, or do you want to control a facility, even if it has your own private dogs? Cause which is what?
And, and, and this becomes an issue, because naturally we're thinking about dogs here. And, and, and this becomes an issue because naturally we're thinking about dogs here, but, I mean, are you allowed to have the, is my Aunt Mariana allowed? She had fifteen indoor cats and thirty outdoor cats.
And no neighbors.
It says no.
It was an issue. This was in, this was in Oregon, but you know, I mean, she, it was a thing. It was, you know, my uncle died and, and, uh, and, and she devolved into this situation.
Loved cats.
Yes, she did. And, and she, she treated them well, but the, the question here is, why would we restrict dogs? The number of dogs is the, as a pet. What about, what about other pets people?
Rabbits.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
It's a huge issue.
Yeah.
And then they. I'll, I'll raise one additional and it's no longer an issue, but when I came to town, there were three kennels of sled dogs who all live outside. They, they were either in kennels or they were on an axle driven into the ground and they could run around in circles. And they were perfectly happy and healthy and stayed out three hundred sixty-five days a year, so.
Yeah. And you, you can argue that dogs are a special case because they have a tendency to bark, but then you should have the similar argument about chickens. Right? Cause I mean, chick, chicken, chickens make noise and that affects the neighbors. So this is, this is a big issue here and it's complicated.
It's not just the use in the, in the building facility, it's whether it's, um, commercial or whether it's private.
Exactly. Yeah, I think that's the question that needs to be decided on.
If you're maintaining for breeding, boarding, sale, training, hunting or other purposes, that's not the same thing as having a family pet.
True.
Right.
Or a bunch of.
Or four, or four family pets.
Or six dogs, right?
Right.
So.
Yeah, it's a, it's a bigger discussion.
If somebody has six dogs in residence B, do the neighbors, can the neighbors say, you've got six dogs, therefore you've got a kennel? And I would say that no, but again, this is something Sam has to be part of. And, and because of the experience an animal control officer would have, I think an animal control officer could offer valuable advice. And then I think really in light of what we just went through, I think we owe it to the town to propose something.
Yeah.
Yes.
Agreed.
So I have drafted that letter to Angus, um, suggesting the departments and staff and boards and committees that may need to be involved and we'll report back on whether he thinks we should, how we thinks we should proceed.
Good.
Hey, did we skip past anything between kennel and lodging house?
Kindergarten we've already decided on.
Yeah, okay.
Now.
Here we are, lot planes again.
Yeah. Please let me check lot area because.
Sounds stady to me.
Engineering wise, it would be the area of the lot projected onto a horizontal plane. And that's not ambiguous, but.
Yeah, cause not every parcel is a horizontal plane for sure.
No.
I think that's what's intended by the language.
I do too.
So too. Well, that's probably from the building code.
Well, couldn't it be the buildable plane instead of the horizontal plane?
No, not, no, because buildability is another whole thing. You take up slopes and wetlands and stuff.
I'm not finding lot area.
Okay, so we should ask him where that came from then.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Hey, what's the next one, Sue?
What's that one yellow?
It's something about a garage gas station, so I'm gonna have to figure out where that goes.
One thing, yes.
It should be, it should be apparent when I get to it, so.
Unless we already got to it.
This one says something about clarification. Term only found in definitions.
Yeah, he's just got to clarify this for us.
Remove.
Oh, it's up at the, it's up at the top of that page.
Oh, was it?
Keep going up, 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 up. It was under loading dock or loading something. Keep going a little bit more up. Up, 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 up. It said birth. Uh, where was it? One more tick.
I see it.
Loading space. Of birth.
Okay.
So, but it looks like he added that and yet he's saying we shouldn't add it. I'm confused.
Removed birth.
He didn't remove it.
Yeah.
Typically used for ships.
That's true, but is he removing or adding? Okay, question.
Yeah.
He meant to cross it out.
I think so.
Yeah.
Instead of underline it.
You're right. I think Sam was having a moment with his.
Okay, so we are down at nursery school is another one of the same kind of in that group nursery school.
Yep.
Well, uh, uh, birth can be a space to, uh, intended to house an automotive vehicle.
Instead of, I would call it a bay, but okay.
Yeah, it's, it, it, it's unusual that way. It's normally considered nautical, but.
Yeah.
A space for an automotive vehicle at rest, a truck loading berth.
For a loading dock, I can see it.
Yeah, it's a, they're called bays. It's, it's a typical.
Usually a bay though, yeah, not a berth.
What about mobile home? Did we skip over mobile home?
We did, and I want to read that.
He didn't make any change.
Right, then I'm questioning whether this is an up to date definition of a mobile home. Maybe it is.
Yeah. You're right, Tim, though. Sort of intuitively, these really long ones are not up to date. They've been cobbled together over years of cobbling.
And we have nothing that pertains to manufactured housing. That's.
Oh, no. We used to.
Massachusetts, uh, general law is referring to manufactured housing. But, um, nowadays, I think we've got to be very careful because, um.
Modular or manufactured are.
You, you can have houses that are constructed off-site and then it's onsite.
Yes.
They're far better than stick built.
Yeah, but, but that's a different thing altogether.
Yeah.
So this is, uh, by the way, if it's helpful, Sue, this is Mass General Law, chapter forty.
What is?
Uh, manufactured housing.
Is it, is it something zoning?
That's not zoning. I would, I would think it would have the proper definition.
That's, that's building.
Yeah, that's not a permit stuff.
Well, there's a fine line between a mobile home and a manufactured home.
And that's, that's why the ma, the mobile home has wheels or.
An axle.
Could be moved.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is also important to us because, uh, we could have, uh, a detached accessory dwelling unit.
Right.
And is that allowed to be a mobile home?
Right.
Oh, that's a good question.
Somebody just, you know, drag in a mobile home, put it up on blocks and say, there's my accessory dwelling unit.
Is it nine, is it nine hundred square feet?
It's a tiny house. It probably meets the definition quite nicely.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might.
Which, you know, personally, I'm fine with that. But I think that, that you would, you would have, uh, people crying out if people were to use a mobile home, so.
Yeah.
Right.
But it was, it, it could, a tiny house could be wheeled into place and put on a foundation.
Yes, it could be. Or it could keep its wheels, frankly.
Yes, you could move it when you're done with the whole shebang.
Well, yeah, that, that's, that's a.
Other story.
We didn't cross, yeah.
No, but, but I bet you it's a bridge that we can't avoid crossing.
Yeah, well.
Sometime.
So these things that are just passing by, he's just removed them because we don't use them anywhere, right?
I think so.
I mean, cool.
Or maybe it just doesn't need clarification.
Hmm. Structure?
Structure is still.
Yeah.
That which is built or constructed.
So that's the, so that's the building code definition?
I don't have a note or I don't know which word, which note goes with that.
Let me just, let me just check the international building code here. This is interesting to me.
Structure.
Because this would mean that, yeah, there it is. It's right out of the international code.
Okay.
That means a retaining wall is a structure.
Yeah, this is a reductive kind of.
A side, a sidewalk i- is a structure. A, a, uh,
Pretty well.
A perforated corrugated plastic pipe.
A birdhouse.
Okay, okay, alright. I'm just, we want to move on to, to the next item here.
Yeah.
So this is, this is good. We, we, actually we got through this. I'm pleased. And Sam has, we have a lot of questions for Sam.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, it's, it's all good.
And I'll start with making sure that we have a document whereby the notes don't move so you can tell what his intent is.
Yeah, that, that would be helpful. The next to go around.
Yeah, good.
I know we want to move on, but could you flag screened area and yard for him too?
Yep.
Thank you.
I find it really interesting. I could not find a good definition of lot area. Right? I mean, how basic is that to everything we do? And yet I couldn't find a definition for it. I found lots of individual bylaws in Massachusetts that define it.
Well, it seems like the fundamental definition.
It does, I know.
And, and you know, normally whether or not it's projected on a horizontal plane or not is, is just, it's, it's insignificant, the difference. But, you know, you could get into something with steep slopes. So.
Okay. Moving along, um, did we, Sue, did you want to just?
What's on the agenda next?
Bill before we, uh, or.
It doesn't matter, whatever's next on the agenda.
Right there, just, let's just talk about the bill and we'll get to the regulations.
Bill, some questions on that.
So this was the, um, their invoice from July through September. You may recall their first invoice was, didn't have a lot of information, so we asked them to, to put that in, which they are quite responsive and put in the dates and put a little annotation come next to the work that has been done. So this has been submitted.
Didn't they do a nice job of presenting that at the, um, forum this week, last week?
Yeah, I thought they were terrific, though.
I did too. I, I. They could answer questions before they were asked and, uh, and the crowd was the usual suspects, but it was, I, I, I think there was a lot of enlightenment that went on. People uh, could see that both the nap and the done parcels would be appropriate to consider for this.
I want to just say something about the water though, because that was asked about. And I asked Sue and she very kindly resented me the report from the water consultants, which not surprising at all to me, deals only with fire flows, which is basically what Tada and Howard is tasked with doing. And with sizing, piping and, you know, talking in a very technical way, really, a practical, technical way about how water is moved around. They are silent on the subject of our town's water supply, and yet this is obviously something that people are very concerned about. And we don't say that you can't have a building permit because there isn't going to be enough water. That isn't how it works. But I do think that's something that we're going to need to be ready to address when we try to bring this forward. Because it may be a red herring, but it could be a damaging one for the, for the future of this thing. So we need to think about that.
Yeah, Sue, can you, um, stop the sharing? Uh, cause.
Oh, yes.
If we're going to talk about this, and I, I have a.
Thanks.
Item to discuss before we get into the, uh, the, the regulations. No, and I think your point's well taken. Um, you know, that, I, I'm not sure if we need to draft that question to the, uh, commissioners or maybe Dodson and Flinker and see, get, just get their opinion. With, uh, how, how this. You know, I, I don't think from what I have read, the state is going to consider that you don't have sewage capacity or water for these developments.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, and, yeah.
Well, we really ought to get the opinion of the water department too.
Well, yeah, but I, 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 I guess I'm saying in, in terms of, you know, an argument on town meeting floor, it's, it's certainly a valid question. But I don't think it's something that you can say, we can't, we, we, we can't pass this bylaw because we might not have enough water or we might not be able to handle sewage if we were in a town with sewage treatment.
No, I understand that. I just think we, we need to think about how that message is going to be conveyed to people who don't understand, you know? Or for whom that seems like an important thing, um, how we. I don't know. I, I, I can't even formulate the question properly. I just saw that it created a lot of unease.
Yeah, so Sue, could you make a note and maybe send a, just let's see what our consultants have to say. And perhaps from that we can. Cause I, I don't know what will he, we would hear from our town water commissioners.
No, in fact, I think it's really a separate topic. I mean, we have a representative here from the select board. This is a very known issue in town. The select board's been working on it for years. Everyone's been working on it, looking for land, all that. So that's kind of another subject. And what I would love to know is, is there something in the MBTA communities law that along with Murphy's, you know, with our rule, will just refer to the regulations, you know, this is what the MBTA Communities Act says. This is regardless, you know, this has nothing to do with infrastructure, you know, chapter and verse about that. And so we're, we're moving ahead and we're not considering these other things. But I'd love to be able to make it somebody else's information that dictates that.
Thank you. Yeah, exactly.
And I do think that, um, like any proposed project that comes to a town, the proponent has to, um, show that there is adequate and available water sewer utilities. Um, so the zoning of a property for a use does not mean that it has any of those things. Um, and it's up to the proponent to do that. So, but I do think, and the other answer of course is that you know, the town is actively looking for additional water sources and they'll continue to do so.
Right, right. No, well put, Sue. Thank you. Yeah, certainly that's why Chip Hall, I think on both of his projects had to make improvements to the town's water system.
Yes, yes.
That's how we do it. It becomes part of the developer's burden.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so here's, here's a, uh, question, um, and a comment that was posed to me at the, at the meeting by Nathan Dennis. Um, I think you all perhaps remember that, you know, we, uh, had met with Nathan and, uh, online as well as in person. And as his parcel, which abuts the Dunn property, had been mentioned along with Mr. Bush's property is, is something that we might look at with this, um, uh, in this process. He was, I wouldn't say upset, but he, he was concerned that he, his parcel didn't seem to, um, have, um, I guess, e- e- enough consideration of, of its potential. And I explained to him that we had already, as, as we winnowed down the choices, we dropped the, the, uh, Mullen parcel. And we felt that his parcel and Mr. Bush's, um, would provide too great of a contiguous opportunity that would be far in excess of what certainly the town and, and this board was looking for in meeting the, uh, the requirements of the state law.
Correct.
Um, and he said, well, that, that's, yeah, I understand, but, um, I'd really like to see what my parcel would look like. And he offered, he said, you know, I'll pay the consultants if they can draw something up for me that shows kind of what they showed on the Dunn and, uh, the nap parcels. And I, I did my best to deflect because I didn't think it was a good idea. I even mentioned, you know, Dennis, Nathan, um, you have a, you don't have access to Main Street. You have a house there. He said, well, I have a right of way. I said, but that's, that's not a, that's not access. You would be proposing something where the house has to be removed in order for it to be considered. He said, well, I could do that. So I said, as we were trying to get things underway, I said, look, I'll, I'll go back. I'll talk to the board about this and then Sue and I can draft the note. That was my thinking about this. So I just, I, I just wanted to reiterate what, you know, he's, you know, he, he was very polite. But you know, he, he just wondered why he couldn't have some further consideration. Now, to that point, later in the evening in the discussion, I heard that someone say, well, you know, maybe we ought to be considering just one parcel. And you know, drop the Dunn or drop the nap or whatever. And I know I have been a proponent of keeping both parcels in play. Perhaps at a point in time, we would win it with down to one. I'm not sure we're there tonight, but I just want to offer that, that was also my, my thought process. So does anybody want to talk about Mr. Dennis's request?
Yeah, I'd like to weigh in a little bit. Nathan posed the same question for me and part of what I recall is that above a certain number of units is going to require a package plan. And that it was sort of a deliberate choice to keep the parcel small enough that we could only get eighty-seven slash ninety units either on one parcel or two. Secondly, I, I'm quite familiar with Nathan's property. I, I sold it to him. And I sold the abutting eight acre parcel above the Dunn property. His land is very steep along the lot line back there. Possibly you could get into it from the, from the Dunn property. Maybe that was how he was thinking to avoid having to tear down the house to get a right of way there. If it was zoned along with the Dunn property, you could add another road. Those are my thoughts.
So it, it, just the Dennis property in a vacuum, shall we say, or on its own, I would say has insufficient frontage. I believe it has some kind of intermittent stream running across it or some kind of wetland crossing would be required. And then it's very steep. So I would say as it sits there on the land alone, I don't think it, it would have made our first cut. The only reason it came up was early on before we, we, and even the consultants, I would argue, really understood the language of the law. We believe that Dunn and then, oh boy, Dennis and these other, all this adjacent stuff, wouldn't it be great? We could have a great big area. Then we all learned through Dodson and Flinker's research with the state that by choosing a large parcel that way, we would be opening ourselves up to saying, okay, fifteen units an acre on twenty acres. We're up to three hundred units now folks. And thereby decided that we would rather select an area that meets the letter of the law, but does not open us to, up to the development of an enormous project, which is really not in keeping with the town.
That's, that's, that's exactly it.
So that's what happened. And I think now knowing what we know, we would never have brought it up.
I, yes, and I yeah, alluded to that, that, you know, you're right. We, we looked and we were trying to figure out how is this thing going to work? And then you get into the details of the land and yeah, it, it, it is not something I could even envision trying to bring up. Having an adjacency there. If it was on its own, without that house in front, it would be a difficult parcel on its own to develop. But you probably could do it. But the, I don't think it would even pass muster with the state that says, oh, we have to tear down a house to build
To create housing.
To create housing.
Yeah, they don't care. They don't care if it's already built on or not. It doesn't have to be a vacant lot. And I, and Nathan, I think he owns two parcels there. But it still doesn't have the frontage that the others that we've looked at.
I mean, both, both Dunn, Dunn and Nap have structures that will probably be torn down.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think tearing down a structure, even a, a good house prohibits it from, from us considering it.
No.
But yeah, I don't, I, I agree exactly with what Anne said as far as how this whole thing went.
But also if you're looking to, if you're looking to actually get something built, I mean, it makes really good sense to look at two that are either on the market or close to being on the market or potentially on the market in the near term. So.
Right. No, I, I I just, I, I felt obligated to bring it up and, and just reiterate.
Again, we, we get back, we get back to the, the fundamental question I keep coming back to. And that's, do we want to meet the letter of the law and be done with it? Or are we actually trying to increase housing in the Commonwealth? And, and I think a lot of us can have different opinions about increasing housing in the Commonwealth here in West Newbury. And you know, I, just to throw out a number, maybe you'd have fifty percent for it and fifty percent against it. But meeting the letter of the law is something that we all have to agree to, or there will be dire consequences.
Yeah.
Therefore, I think the responsible thing for us to do as a planning board is propose something that meets the letter of the law, but doesn't go beyond that.
Yeah, I, I came away, there were some interesting comments at that meeting and thinking that, you know, in line with what you just said, Ray, that it may be difficult to defend at town meeting having two parcels that go beyond the letter of the law. And, and it, it may be questioned, you know, and, and I think our timing is we, we, this is what we, we need to turn around over the next month. But that, that may be where I, my, my thoughts are changing in that regard.
Yeah. I mean philosophically, I think we want to help with housing. And it's very clear from discussions we've had on the board, we're all concerned about affordable housing.
Yeah.
But the affordable housing component is actually decoupled from, from this effort.
Right.
You know, and we need to.
Whether, whether or not we want it to be.
Right.
It's decoupled. So, so now you get into a political discussion with good points on both sides. And you know, I mean, often stuff is dismissed as being NIMBY. But you know, there, there are reasons why people bought a parcel or, you know, bought it and love living in West Newbury and stuff. And so I think there's legitimate arguments on both sides. My, you know, my personal thing is, yeah, we want to do what we can to help with housing, but so I, and I think this is a chance to, to offer more than what's strictly required, but politically speaking, getting something passed at town meeting, I think we have to just meet the letter of the law and, and not go beyond that because that will be viewed as, I don't know, us imposing our will on the rest of the town.
Yep, I agree.
A governmental overreach.
Yep.
So let's, you know, the density that's contemplated here is just something that scares people. I think when we start talking about the numbers that
Yeah.
accommodate on twenty acres.
It's a density that, that fits in Portland, Oregon.
Right.
You know, where they, they
They have all the municipal systems and, yeah.
Whole different philosophy, right?
Yep.
Yes, feels very urban.
Yeah. So defer the choosing to go from two to one, certainly at this meeting. Well, I, I think that's over in December. We, we need to be moving in some direction. So Sue and I will draft a, a very nice note back to Mr. Dennis. And just reiterate to where we've all discussed and whatnot. And whatnot. So thank you for that. And let's, I know it's eight thirty, but let's, if we could just spend a little time and go through the first few pages or something of the zoning bylaw, or at least have, have some commentary about it.
It's large enough. Can you see it? Okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes. We just want to just roll through a little bit here. I mean, I think the meat is at the end, but that, I don't want, we don't want to spend a ton of time on this tonight, but.
Okay. I just had a preliminary question, if it's okay. I was wondering what the source of this was. Like, is this like a model that has been developed by the state or is this something Dodson and Flinker came up?
Yes, it's Dodson and Flinkers. Yeah.
So all these different sections here are ones that are, they're offering for the, to their clients. Regardless, kind of like what kind of community we're talking about.
Um, no, I think they're, I think it's very specific to us. In fact, they, you know, they kind of talked about the model. They modeled it on our bylaw, right down to the, to the lettering and, you know, the purpose statement and and through that. So I don't, I know they've written a lot of zoning, not necessarily, but not for the MBTA communities act. They've written a lot of zoning on overlay zones for housing, but you know, all kinds of different houses.
So then do we need to be conscious Sue of like some of the definitions? You know, I didn't get all the way through this, but you know, there's a lot of common definitions from our bylaw that they're the same. Did they, did they actually use the same definitions?
They, they did. So they like, that's part of what they said. They used our bylaw. They used the, they, you know, combed through the planning board's regulations through our, through our subdivision rules and regulations. All of that. So they tried to make it very specific to to our existing regulations.
And so then we, we
Need separate, even though they're the same definitions, we need to have separate definition section here.
I do think that the, and I could be wrong. I can double check on this. I do think that they recommended definitions go in this particular bylaw. I could be wrong on that, but I thought that they suggested definitions go in the, in the overlay district bylaw itself.
You may want to think about that. I mean, we don't have to decide that right now, but you know, just because if they change in one case, then you know, we have to make sure they pick, the changes that picked up here. And I would have thought we would only, you know, have an additional definition here if it was different than what was in the, the zoning bylaw.
I don't, I kind of came at it from a different point of view. I, I think, I thought this was pretty artful. I've got some specifics about affordability and other things later on. But I think the trick here, and I think they are succeeding in threading the needle is
Yep.
It needs to be a bylaw that sounds like a bylaw and is a bylaw, but is very tailor-made so that the by right aspect is by right within these confines that reflect what we've told them. You know, that's how you get to control something and still have it be by right. You, you make a very very limited, tailor-made kind of language. And I, I thought it was pretty successful.
I thought so too.
Yeah, that was one of the points in a question certainly that came up at the, at the meeting was you know, you know, design criteria and guidelines, given that we can't, we don't have a special permit here. But if we we lay out expectations that what we get will be close to what we want to see. And, and I, I I understood them to say that this needs a preliminary approval by the state before we even bring it to town meeting.
Yes.
We need to kind of roar through this, I think.
And that's a ninety day, they have a ninety day window. So I promised Dodson and Flinker that I would let you know that they do think that it's with any suggestions that we make in the next week or couple of weeks or that they could give it to the state, get preliminary approval and then tweak it or make changes as needed after that. But I think they'd feel a lot more comfortable if we could at least get your opinion that they could go forward with this or something or, you know, soon, sooner rather than later to make sure that we don't run afoul of the ninety days.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good. So let's
What's the ninety days? Where does ninety days start and end? I don't, I don't get with that.
So that the state wants preliminary review, review of this before it's taken to town meeting vote. So we need, and they have a ninety day review time.
Ah, got it. Okay.
So in theory, that's at, at the latest, we could be, we'd have until the end of December.
Yeah, it's soon. Yeah.
Basically. I mean, maybe a little bit into early January, but town meeting is late April, maybe.
Yeah.
We want time to change stuff.
Yeah.
And they, and
Hopefully they're using a form that's kind of been approved, you know?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that was kind of what I was getting at too, was yeah, that this is, because it has some, the reason I was asking, it has some generic statements in here. One, we already brought up about adequate public infrastructure, including water infrastructure, things like statements like that, which absolutely true. I just don't know if that is like, you know, the permitted purview of these type of bylaws.
Well, the guidelines didn't provide, didn't provide model, a model that I'm aware of, but I know that Dodson and Flinker have been going to all of the special meetings that, that the executive office of housing and community unlivable communities has gone to, to answer questions and ask questions about this. So I know they've been kind of testing out all, everything that they're putting through. And I think the only real thing that they're not completely comfortable is how far the state will let us go on our design guidelines. But I think they'd like to push it to our comfort level and, and then see what the state will say.
Okay.
So is our, our task, and I'm just looking at the calendar, is we really need to hit the design guidelines at the next meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and I'm going to, first of all, I, I didn't even look at them yet. So that, that's what we need to do for the first of December period.
They are certainly all things that they've kind of hit on at the, at their meetings.
Yes.
At least, you know, particularly the last meeting. Yeah. And the, and when they presented to the board, I think they kind of put them in a nutshell of those two functions.
The two areas that I, I did go through the whole thing and made a bunch of notes, but that was a week or so ago. And I'm trying to remember what I was thinking. The two things that I had, thought had some lack of clarity, and I'm hoping other board members can explain it to me, were the table of dimensional standards. And some of the affordability stuff too, but we can go through the whole thing if you want.
Tell me where to, yeah.
Table's on page eight.
Dimensional standards. There it is.
Yeah. I just thought that the table was confusing.
Oh, I see.
I wasn't understanding the Oh, and yeah, even before, yeah.
I don't want to go back on.
I actually liked the table. I don't know. Really?
So somehow I misunderstood something. I don't understand, for example, how can you have a I guess maybe it became more clear the other night when they did their presentation. So when they say a frontage of twenty feet minimum, that doesn't apply to the project. It applies to each building in the project? Because we're talking about lot size as being
So he, they, they're kind of, yeah, they're, they're, they're understanding that this will likely get developed as a condominium, like a cluster, right? But they need to put in some standards in the event that someone comes in and says, and I'm going to divide it into these tiny little lots. And so I think that's what they were trying to do.
So for instance, when they, so it seems to me as you go down here, okay, lot size, that's the whole thing, right? That's a bunch of acres.
Right.
And then lot size for new lots created, that means if it were to be subdivided.
Right.
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
I just think it's very confusing whether we're talking about the whole thing or the teeny little lot. I just think it's very confusing whether we're talking about the whole thing or the teeny little lot. Um, so I didn't understand how, where a twenty foot frontage came from, because that's.
Yeah, I would, I would say that, that the first thing required lot size to be eligible. I don't. I would say that's required zoning area.
Yeah, or parcel or something, yeah.
Something like that. And then, you know.
That's not the lot, yeah.
Yeah, individual, individual lots created. Under the MCMOD, okay, no minimum. Height, that's fine. Stories, that's good. Open space.
I mean, like the open space refers to the whole parcel, the two hundred and fifty.
Exactly, exactly, so.
A little lot. So they've got to pull that apart for me to.
I, I agree with you because it's mixed up. And then, and then twenty feet.
Yeah, I was like, what?
Is that really, is that really? Cause I, I keep.
I think that come, I think that comes from, from the state. If there's no um. Frontage minimum, something, I think there's a, I think that's. It's either within your subdivision or some regulations. That's what that twenty feet goes back to.
Yeah, where's the, why twenty feet though is what I come up with. Cause I mean, it, it, I keep coming back to the, you know, the English row house concept.
Yeah, that's three twenty feet. I guess if, if I had to redo this table, I would somehow break it down so that. Certain things would belong in the global picture, which is the lot size, the open space, the height, the gross density. The transitional stuff, stuff that applies to the whole parcel. And then I might have like a double line and under that I would say something like. If, if the parcel is subdivided, then.
Yes, I, I, I just think two separate tables.
Yeah, or else two separate tables, but it was just making me scratch my head.
I, I agree.
Well, and, and the other possibility is that we are including a, we could include apartment buildings. So it may not be individual ownership. It might not even be condominiums. It might be.
Big building.
Could be all, yes.
Yeah.
And so those.
If you, if you have a twenty foot frontage and then you have two seven and a half foot side setbacks. Does that mean that your building can be five feet wide?
Well, exactly. And it was, yeah.
Well, it's, it's a minimum. I mean.
For instance, the minimum distance between buildings, apparently that fifteen feet is derived from seven point five plus seven point five. But it all seems grambly to me. I, I think they can fix it.
Yeah, and the other thing is, is, yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay, so there's a big building. A possibility of a big building that with multiple apartments or condos. And there's a possibility of individual buildings. But again, what about the possibility of row houses, that sort of thing? Uh, they're not called row houses. What do we call them here?
Townhouses.
Townhouses, townhouses. You got a big building, but they're individual townhouses.
Right.
So, yeah, all this stuff, I, I mean, you'd still want a minimum of fifteen feet between townhouses. So, yeah, I think we need to divide this up into one, uh, into two tables, maybe three.
Well, it, it, if we, if part of our determination is which of the designs that they came up with. Appealed, is, is that part of what we have to determine or does that?
No, we, we can't specifically pick.
So that's why I think you, you probably, you probably almost need a separate table for each building type.
Yeah.
They're trying to make provisions for different types that could be proposed, but it would need to be made clear.
Yes.
I think that's the needle that he's trying to thread here.
I know, but I don't think he succeeded in this table.
But, but, yeah, I, I think there's good stuff here. It just.
I think the data is there.
Down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you might, you might have a, a, you know, a table that's just, you know. For each building created.
Yeah.
You need, you need sides, backs, fifteen feet between buildings, et cetera, et cetera.
Parcel criteria and building criteria, something like that.
Yeah.
They'll know what.
We, we can get his opinion right soon. About that?
Yes, I, I think he was struggling, when I had spoken with him, he was struggling with this too, because he was saying, you know, I'm trying to. Create one table, but.
Right, one side spits all never works.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Are there other sections that are more globally, yeah?
Affordability, now I'm trying to think where would it be, four nine. Let me see if my notes will make sense to me. I'll look at them again. Corosity is terrifying. Affordability requirements. Oh, 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 this was his bombshell. This is his grenade. The inclusionary housing provisions? Wait a minute, Dylan, where did that come?
Right.
I don't know if we want to do that. We want to do that?
I don't think you possibly can.
I don't think we.
Okay, with peace.
I think it would be. Eight, four, nine, two, page nine.
Yeah.
There's a lot of other stuff in between, uh, designs, which we're, I'm skipping over completely. We can do that next time, but.
And by the way, these illustrations that you see are typical of their work and. Will be through the rest of the documents once we land on the um. Criteria that you want, the parameters that you want.
So somehow my page numbers aren't the same as yours, but if you keep going eight, four, nine, that will be.
Eight, four, nine. Okay, here we are.
There it is. It says the inclusionary applies and then it says we can wait.
If it's financially infeasible.
Yeah, but you know, we, we spent many a moon looking at yield plans over the years with people. I don't like. The squishy language that you just. Trying to prove and disprove and there's no objective standards. No, that doesn't work for me. Sorry.
So, so what are you saying? That we take it out or that we take out eight, four, nine, two?
I, I think we should take out eight, four, nine, two. If we're serious about affordability, you know?
I don't think, that's, that's, that's. Can't, my, again, I don't believe you can demand affordability with the state law.
But you, can't you demand that it comply with your pre-existing zoning requirements, six point one?
Thank you.
I think there's, I think there's a little bit of squishy there. So that, what they are saying now is that, what they, my last understanding is. That if you required up to ten percent, um, then you could continue to require up to ten percent. At eighty percent, no deeper afforded subsidy. However, they did, they have said that. If it can be proven that it makes the project infeasible, that it would not be allowed, so.
Well, that's, that's, that's what he said at the meeting when a bunch of their flags went up on this.
Right.
But I, it just, I don't buy it.
Yeah, it's a, it's the, yeah.
So I mean, if you, if you can't make this work, then you can't, you can't make it work. I don't, I don't think we, as soon as you allow this squishiness. You just added like five public meeting, meetings and all this kind of stuff, because they're gonna. I think every developer is gonna key on this and come up with persuasive language of why they can't afford to do it. But they can't afford to do it, especially if, if, if you're building houses. That, you have, so you increase your, your, the cost of your market valid, uh, value units to make it go. Yeah, you, you, you have to subsidize the affordable units. Everybody knows that. You know, it used to drive John Sarkis crazy.
Still does.
Yeah.
Still does, still does. But I, I, I don't think that, that that, just because it, it makes it tougher for the developer. If, if you leave eight, four, nine, two in there, it's gonna make it tougher for everybody. And, and it's just gonna, it's just gonna devolve.
We, so if we delete that, we see, we see what the state goes back and says, well, you can't have. The first section, or, or maybe they, they, maybe they leave it in.
Right. I think we need to decide to test the state and whether we test by leaving it in or test by taking it out. That's the conversation.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm good with that. Let's, let's leave in inclusionary, but take out the squishiness.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, it's, it's persuasive.
And if they bounce it back, we have that language.
If they bounce it back, we try it.
Yep, and I think we have to try.
Because this, this is another one of those things where, you know, this could tank a town meeting vote.
Yes, yes.
You, you never know, you never know where a town meeting discussion is gonna go.
And how about the bonuses? This is trying to incentivize developers to do more than the ten percent. So it says when twenty percent.
Then I thought that wasn't allowed. I thought you couldn't have more than ten percent. I'm very confused.
Well, is in an incentive, you can't require it, but you could offer it as a bonus, as an incentive.
But how can you make twenty percent as a base if you can only make ten percent? So you're saying you could make, you could make twenty percent? So I guess this is what I.
You'd have to do ten.
The lack of clarity is, is the second clause. The number of allowed units in any building type may be increased by one third.
Right.
I don't know what that means.
So they told, they said that you could have building types, for example, I think they said townhouses, you couldn't have any more than. Six or eight in a row. This is saying that you could have ten in a row. So you could increase in any building type. So you could have an apartment building that is no more than twenty buildings, twenty units. But if you had, you know, if you would say twenty percent of affordable, we're gonna let you make a, a building that has. Even more, that one third more. That's what they're trying to say.
And I, and I, I'm okay with that.
But where are we setting the number of units in a building type?
I'm assuming it's someplace else in the document.
But, you know, they, they're gonna build to the max that they can get the septic for, the number of bedrooms.
Yeah, I just not sure that bonuses, that these kinds of bonuses.
I, I'm not sure, frankly, I, I, I'm not even sure a bonus is even worth putting in here.
No, and the same thing with that open space. I mean, we know how contentious this stuff gets.
Yeah, I, I.
But we have the review possibility and when it's by right, how, how are we gonna control it? I don't get it.
For me, I wouldn't do a bonus because I, I, I really believe a developer is gonna say, look, I can get thirty-five units in here. And the bedrooms, um, and, and that's it. A bonus does me no good.
Yeah, I'm okay without having this in it.
I guess I just have the clean units that we need. We're not really trying to get more units. It's already unbelievable.
Yeah, well, let's put our energy towards the mullen and, and something else, but.
So the only other, the only other point that I wanted to help um explain for them on the bonuses, the one thing that they. You recall that they didn't, um, because we wanted to keep the size limited to only allow for. A certain number of units. Um, that meant that we were, we're not zoning. Part of those parcels as a MCMOD, as a multifamily, right? And what he want, they're trying to protect against is saying, okay, that means generally that would probably be um. Open space, but there's no guarantee that it would be open space if the developer says. Because, you know, they can't, they can't say you can't. That's, that's the, the underlying zoning still pertains to that. So someone could come in and build a house on it.
Where would they, but where would their frontage be? Can we make some kind of language that says that the road for the MCMOD cannot be used to derive frontage? Or?
Don't know.
You mean a house by somebody else entirely?
No, no. Say you picture those drawings and there's a whole chunk over here.
Right.
On it, and we're imagining it's the poppy field staying nice and open, but in fact, that piece already has a hundred and fifty feet of frontage and. Could they just put a new McMansion on that lot?
Right, exactly.
Well, I'm envisioning that the open field is actually the septic's situation.
Yeah.
We would assume that it would be, that's, but.
But it might not be.
Yeah, that's.
On the other hand, if the purpose is to create housing, do we care if another house or two gets built in there? And maybe that thereby that allows the affordability thing, takes away that infeasible argument.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's gonna be open space because of the septic and, and the fact that we're enforcing a uh. Screening of something on the edges of the property.
That's true.
I agree with you and I, I don't really care if there's another house in there. You know, we're, we're, it's all about housing on this parcel.
Yeah, there, I mean, obviously in their design sense, they're, they know that what you're want to see is something that. You know, has that character that they portrayed in those images. So they were cognizant of trying to. Make, find a way to protect that. Yeah. And whether people would use the bonus or not, and they might not anyway, so. Um, it might not be enough of a bonus. They might say, no, I'd rather build a McMansion there. So. There's no way to guarantee that it will unless we find some way to not give it frontage. And I don't know if you can do that.
Yeah, yeah.
But just wanted to explain why they wanted to, why they were trying to do that.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I don't know. We're trying to build houses here. We have lots of open space in town. I'm, I'm not gonna lose sleep over. Something that we're trying to just build housing units for me.
Yeah, especially when we're gonna limit it to one particular lot or maybe.
Yes.
Yeah.
The, the, in my mind, that lot has lost its open space anyway.
I, I, that's kind of where I'm at. It's, we're, we're doing it to build houses.
Reasons, yeah.
Well, we're doing it to comply with the law.
Well, well, yes, yes, yes. Which is building houses.
Right, but the number, and then, and then just between us squirrels and the whole town, we know that the number of units that will be. Profitable to build is going to be limited by, by sewage and water supply.
Yeah.
Well, good conversations. I feel like we haven't had a. A thorough conversation like this for, for a while, having been very focused on a lot of the other details, so. Think that they'll get some good feedback on this.
Good.
So. And, and I, yeah, I'll go back through this for the next uh meeting. Um, is there anything in particular you think we should focus on, Sue? For our next review of this?
No, I think maybe it's most helpful if you all just kind of do it and then pick out the pieces that either you think are well done or. Need some clarification. I know, there may be large parts of it that don't need much more than your individual review.
I mean, I, I, you know. I think the fact that the state is going to review this anyway is gonna tell us a lot when it comes back.
Right. I think from Dodson and Flinker's standpoint, they wanted to know if they went too far or not far enough on their design parameters.
So where would you say the design parameters first? I felt like the whole thing was pretty designy, frankly.
A lot of it is. Um, let me, I think it's actually incorporate, I think it's actually titled that. And let me see.
Well, that would be helpful where the drawings are probably.
Yeah, yeah, it is that part. It's.
Development standards, site design?
I think it's both of, yeah, those two. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what we should focus on.
Okay.
You, you know, if, if we can get, you know, I think Deb said, if we can get something that's close to what they. Had shown us, we'll all be pretty happy about this.
Yeah, I think so too. Yep.
Yeah, I, I guess I have a pretty high level of confidence that their description and the images and. What they've told us will align pretty well. They seem to be pretty good at that.
And what, but whether the state shares that or.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that's out of our control. But I'm just saying, as far as feeling like this might not convey it. You know, except for these things that really jumped out at me. I think they do convey it, but we'll have to all.
Some of, some of us on the Affordable Housing Trust have been driving around and looking at projects in. Other towns that are affordable and stylish and, and would get along nicely with our vernacular architecture here in town. Um, and I think Dodson and Flinker did a great job of coming up with different scale buildings, all of which. Are pretty attractive.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm hopeful that people will like what they see.
Yeah, they, they, they've had a very good ability to uh. Put, you know, ta- take what we've talked about and what they've seen into a.
Yeah.
The document and, and. the document and, and, and the, the, the vision.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think they know how to do this.
I think, I think 845 forward is kind of what they would just want to make sure that they're.
Okay.
Either.
So all the things that are in the purpose section in the section 8.4.1, which I agree with them all, but hopefully these are founded in ones that are, have been reviewed by the state.
Right.
Because we shouldn't, we shouldn't be trying to make up a new purpose, it's, it's really trying to be consistent with the state law.
Yes, but I think each community will have their own, you know, focus on, on what they're doing as well, I think they've tried to capture that.
Yeah, but not for the purpose.
Well, but what I think is tricky, Tim, is that the state didn't do a model for this.
Right.
State threw out this amoeba, and now they're expecting us all.
Right.
You know the old saying, you throw the amoeba against the wall and see what.
And they may be, they may regret that.
Exactly, then you see if spaghetti and meatballs ends up on your plate.
Yeah, but it's, you know, I, I don't be cynical about it, but then it always becomes our fault if we try to create it.
And I think that's the trouble, you know, we'll send it to them, and they'll send it back on day 89 and a half with a lot of complaints. So, yeah, it's pretty tricky, they're backing into it, and, you know.
Yeah, I think it's interesting that they're doing this in reverse order, normally pass the bylaw and then they, they review it. But here, I think they're curious, I wonder what the hell they came up with.
Right.
Oh, that's, that's a good idea.
You go first, no, you go first.
Exactly, yeah.
Right.
It's pretty funny.
Okay. Good discussion, very good, so, yeah, we'll, we'll hit this hard again on, what, what day is that, is it December 5th? I had it here.
Yes, December 5th. Yeah.
December 5th.
Okay.
And, and maybe we'll feel comfortable enough to say, hey, send it off early and we'll get an earlier answer back.
Right.
Yes, I think we should send it as soon as we can.
Okay. Excellent, thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
Do we need to cover anything on that? I don't think so.
No.
You written nothing else, right? So.
Correct, correct.
So, minutes?
Oh, yes, let me pull those out.
Did we, did we do the October 3rd, it looked familiar, or, I, I know I had read them.
Yes, that was my fault, we're only.
No, 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 that's okay.
Well, I didn't, my fault in that I didn't pass them on and let her know that we corrected them.
Memory here.
I know, I wrote to Sue and said, I think I've seen this before.
And said, I think you're right.
Oh.
Isn't that cute?
Look at that, yeah.
You have a kennel, oh, never mind.
I can't wait until the seals come back to the Mary Back River.
Cute one.
What's that? Minutes. November 17th, let me make this full size. Did you have any changes that you're?
Brian wasn't there.
I wasn't here, there, so.
Oh.
I read it.
Oh, it says Brian Murphy was not an excedence.
Yep.
Um, at the end of the informal discussion, um, where it talks about what John Sarkis was saying in that last sentence, I think he was referring to a subdivision plan. That's the way I understood it anyway.
Yes, I can, yes, he said a cul-de-sac, which would make it a.
Yeah, so I don't know if you want to say, you know, this, he was contemplating a subdivision of a cul-de-sac instead of a common drugstore.
Yeah, he was listening pretty attentively when we were going over those kinds of things with 87 Crane Next Street, I noticed.
Yep. Could I just, was there room on that to do two lots if he did a subdivision thing, or?
That's what they're trying to do.
Oh, I mean, I mean, two buildable lots, so he'd have three, no?
No, trying to do two, two, to split off one.
One.
Not like 87, but similar to, yeah.
And the ones you've already seen crossing out is just things that I had.
Yep.
Let me know if I'm scrolling too fast.
Just on the minutes, I don't think you need the others, if any, there. Or.
Because we didn't do them, yeah.
Yeah.
It just came out of the agenda.
Right. Oh, good.
I think that's it.
Yes.
If we accept these minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Kim Cronin, I.
Rick, okay.
Hamilton, I.
Yep, I abstain. So for, the vote is four in favor, one abstention.
Correct, right.
Good, thank you, Sue. Okay, uh, correspondence or administrative details?
I think we just. Not really, I've already, no, I, I've, I've already shared that I've sent a, a note to Angus about the kennels and the department's working together on that, I can't think of anything else.
Okay. Anything else? Do we have anything at the next meeting that's pending that you see coming down the road at us, or?
I don't.
Nothing so far, that's good.
Not that I think it's coming in, um, December.
Yep, okay.
Got some coming in January, but.
Oh, really?
Yes, and I can't remember whose it was. Maybe John Sarkis.
Oh, maybe, yeah.
Could be, could be. All right, anybody have anything else? I don't know, I, I know Wendy's been sitting there, I hope you weren't waiting for something, but just tuning in, having a quiet night, huh?
We can't hear you.
No, we can't hear you, even though you don't look muted.
But even though we can't hear you, Wendy, I'm impressed that you show up and pan out what we're talking about.
We, we still can't hear you.
We can't hear you for some reason.
Give us a chat.
That's a thumbs up, that's perfect.
All right, all right.
Happy.
Um, anyone else have anything else they? No, okay, well, hope everybody has good, good plans for Thursday and, uh, you know, we're, we're lucky, we're not gonna be shoveling tomorrow or something, so just rain, you know.
Thank God we're gonna get some rain.
You know, yeah, but it's been like the week, hasn't it, or?
Actually, the fall, the fall hasn't been too bad, just summer was amazing.
No, 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 it's a forgettable summer, yeah.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
Clean mold off things I've never cleaned mold off of.
Oh, I know, all right, well, I hope everybody has a, has a great holiday, we'll see on the 5th. So I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? I, Brian Murphy, all of us, yep, good.
All right, happy holidays.
You too.
Thank you, Sue, good job.
You're welcome, thank you.